I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Supervisor Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman McNamara.
Here.
Councilman Iasili.
Here.
Councilman Pell.
Present.
Councilman Martel.
Here.
Thank you. All right, we're going to start the work session today with a discussion about amendments to Chapter 123, Building and Construction, regarding construction noise and other issues. And Sean McDermott, our Chief Building Inspector is here with us. Why don't you come up and join us, Sean?
Good morning, Sean. How are you today?
Good morning, everybody. How's everybody doing?
Good. Getting ready for the ducks.
What's that?
Getting the turkey out.
Yeah, just got to find my duck stamps somewhere.
Good luck, they're all sold out.
Crazy.
I got it through the post office online.
What's that?
Got it online through the post office.
Oh, really? Okay, that's good. Because your hunting permit now is on your phone now.
Yeah.
No more back tags or anything like that.
Just don't lose your phone.
Yeah.
So I'll just say thank you, by the way, Sean, for all your efforts in collaborating on this. I know we had a work session on this previously. There were some questions about the extent to which we should be restricting construction noise from occurring. Also, there were questions that Councilman Pell had raised about parking, how we can address some of those issues. I talked about this with Councilwoman McNamara as well. And Christine, you've been very helpful in trying to redraft this to account for everybody's concerns and questions. So I'll leave it to you all.
So, I mean, everybody, I think, has a copy of the latest draft that we came up with, and I think it does strike a balance that you all were looking for, but obviously it's for you to comment on and let us give us some feedback. And Sean can go through it specifically if you have any questions.
Okay, well, I mean, the first one here on 123, and C, in addition with regard to said building permit, the chief building inspector shall therein require onsite parking, and such requirement shall be printed thereon. In determining the requirement to provide for onsite parking, the chief building inspector will take into consideration certain things as the size and scale of the project, the expected duration of the project, the amount of workforce reasonably expected onsite daily, and the time of year.
And that would be a may, that he may do that, depending on the circumstances that each of those things would dictate.
Yeah, each job is different, you know. Most of these jobs are in neighborhoods, and they do impact the neighborhood. So trying to find the balance, because just as people have every right to build their house, the people living around that have every right to be, not have their access blocked. Emergency vehicles have to be able to get through the, around the job site, which, over the years, we've had certain job sites that, I mean, if I have to do an inspection, I'm parking a mile down the road. So that's something that I would take into consideration with the person applying. Sit down with them and have an open discussion.
And by the way, that goes into a lot of the, it dovetails the concerns that have been brought by some of the public, who feel like there are all these vehicles on these properties. A lot of people that talked about this, that wanted us to bring something up, have addressed the traffic as well, and how if we can rearrange this code to address some of the traffic, this gives you the ability to say, well, you know, you can only have a certain number of cars in this space. And that gives you that authority to do that.
Yeah, everything, again, it's on a case-by-case, you know, I mean, you know, a house that I would build in my neighborhood is definitely not one that was being built on Ocean Road in Bridgehampton or Dune Road. The size is considerable. But, you know, you have to sit down and discuss, you know. Do you need five HVAC trucks onsite? You know, you have a shop. Lock down a job box, have your stuff delivered, and you guys can drive together in a couple trucks, you know, your tools are onsite. And then, the biggest thing is individuals driving to the job site in their own personal vehicles. And that's where we have to try and get a little creative, you know, is there a common place that you guys could meet and carpool and come in like that?
Is there, is there a way, though, this is only upon issuance of the permit, is there a way to, if there are neighborhood complaints, to after the fact, change or amend parking restrictions?
We could, we could work with that.
Okay. Because, I mean, I could tell you, just from being in the service industry, I mean, there's places that we were servicing, especially on cul-de-sacs, where the entire cul-de-sac is just locked down with, you know, you have five painters and five different cars, and everybody has their own vehicle, and it's just, they literally take the neighborhood hostage for the entire length of the project.
It's a real issue, and it's a very valid issue. You know, complaints that we receive, you know, we don't take lightly. It's hard. You know, we have certain areas that you have a big house being built in a small neighborhood. And so they can't really park onsite because there's no room. You know, we just received a complaint this week. Lady called, said this construction is being built, and it blocked off the whole street. I called the contractor, good contractor, good reputation, and he's like, he said, "We were pouring the foundation." You know, "It's a small lot. That's the only way you can get in to pour the foundation." So he assured me that he'll do everything in his power not to block the roadway.
I mean, it's also, it's, it's job site management, too, because a lot of these guys, they park in a way that they, you could basically see when you're parking, nobody's getting around you, they don't, they stagger, you know, on either side, and, like, I know the village, sometimes, on the smaller roads in the village, they'll do temporary parking restrictions on one side when there's a construction job going on, which is something we also may want to think about.
Yeah, I've talked to Chris Talbot about that, you know. You know, trying to gleam other ideas of how other municipalities are dealing with this and try it.
This doesn't allow you to override the parking restrictions, the way it's written, right?
For me to override?
Yeah, for you to say, "You can park on Dune Road while you're doing a project."
No, I don't have that authority to do that.
Okay.
Well, you do have, now, within the code, it's baked in, you do have the authority to inform some of the contractors as to what they should be doing, which I think is something that we hadn't had before, and now it's enforceable.
Yes, when it's related to the permit that's involved.
Correct.
Like that.
Well, I think, I think it's, you know, this has become more of a problem now, because employers don't want to pay their employees to come to the shop, and they don't want to pay them to ride out in the traffic. Therefore, they say, "Just show up at the job site at X amount of time," and they're traveling on their time, not their employer's time. So.
It's also just getting people to retrain the way they're thinking about these jobs, and how many people they actually do need, and it's, you know, drawing attention to it.
Actually manage the job sites.
We always have to meet at the shop.
I know a lot of places that still do that, so it's not like it's unheard of.
There's also a second amendment.
The D?
Yeah.
23123, I mean, 12311D. Any building permit issued on or after January 1st, 2026, shall be subject to a condition that no work shall occur on federally recognized holidays, and shall be further subject to Sunday restrictions running from June 1st through August 31st, allowing work no earlier than 9:00 a.m. and no later than 7:00 p.m. for the months of June, July, and August. And I think that's a good compromise on, on noise on the weekends. You know, we have a combination, we have, in this township, we have people that have to work and can only work on the weekends, because they're working during the week, and so the, you know, they're going to be making noise, but then you have people that come out on the weekends, and they want to relax, and so the noise is bothering them. So I think this is a good mix, it meets right in the middle, and 9:00, I think, is reasonable. And then you work, you know, till 7:00, so I think that's a good mix, other than saying you can't work.
I think that's fair. I think the only, the only holiday in here that becomes an issue, that I know has become an issue for the service industry in the village, is Juneteenth, because it's on a Thursday, and it's a day when everybody expects to go to work. And they, you know, it's a day, it's in June, it's, you know, I mean, it's something, I guess they're going to have to address and deal with, but the only other thing that I had asked was Ryan Murphy, I'd spoken to him about this briefly yesterday, and he had asked about having something in the code about suspending this in case of there's a hurricane coming or a storm, or something to that effect.
You don't need anything in the code, you can do that anyway.
But would you have to suspend the code?
Under state of emergencies, you can do whatever it is you need to do to get something done.
Okay.
If you want, I mean, we certainly can't put something in there.
I don't think it's necessary.
He just said if it was like, if it was a prolonged thing, like after a hurricane, that the supervisor would have to, every five days, reissue that notice to allow them to.
They're going to have to do that anyway.
Well, but I was looking at the Village of Southampton's code, and it says, "It shall not," you know, in the definition, "Construction work shall not mean the performance of necessary emergency repairs or work." So maybe we could just add a sentence so that emergency situations are exempted. Is that an issue, Michael?
It would be, yes, it's, I mean, that's certainly easy to add.
You can add that.
There's no impact by adding that.
You know, we deal with people that get pretty creative, so with their emergency repair, you know, that they consider, you know.
It's written in.
And you know what else, this also, because you said something about homeowners, it doesn't prohibit, I was just looking at, I finally just really focused on this, sorry, I didn't do it before, but I was looking at Quogue and Southampton Village, and, you know, they're a little more restrictive, but they have something that says, "Construction work is defined by performance of, by employees or independent contractors." So it exempts the homeowners, because I think that's part of what we were concerned about, that the homeowner has to work during the week, and then they wouldn't be able to do any work on the weekends. And, you know, so maybe if we exempted that, we could be a little more restrictive, I mean.
Yeah, like that.
Like the Southampton one, they, no work on...
Because I thought we were, I thought we were just doing this on new construction, not on, like, if you were putting, if you're putting, you know, if you're a homeowner that's putting a deck on your house or something like that, I thought this was just for new construction.
I have to check in our definitions.
Is that how it works?
I feel like there's, in our definitions, it excludes homeowner projects from that, but I'm not positive, because I can look, I can look at that, but to the extent it's not there, certainly, of course, again, if the council wants to add it, there's no issue with adding it.
Yeah, this is, F talks about, this is, I believe, F addresses that this is new construction, within section...
So if you're putting an addition on the house, would, could we make that new construction? I mean, that seems like...
That is construction.
An addition would be new construction?
It would contemplate construction. It's all a matter of size, I think, is how they would look at it, but we have to go back and look at the definitions, and we can do that.
Do we have the definition of construction?
Interior renovation.
It's in the code, I don't have that.
You know, interior renovation.
Yeah, exterior really is the concern.
So, I mean, but, you know, just having them start at 9:00 and end at 7:00, I think, is a good compromise.
What is it now? It's an hour earlier.
Seven, seven.
Hour earlier, not original noise.
Yeah.
Here, in the, like, in the village, it's 8:00 to 6:00 during the week, and then on the Saturdays, 9:00 to 5:00. So they reduce it to 9:00 to 5:00 on Saturdays, and they prohibit on Sundays and federal and state holidays. But they're allowing, you know, interior work and a contractor, and then a homeowner to do the stuff. So, I mean, if the board's not comfortable with being more restrictive, because I think when Councilmember Iasili first presented, it was a little more restrictive, but then there was pushback, and so...
No work. This is, this is ours, this is, I'm fine with this, because it's just limiting hours on Sundays. I just want to be able to make sure that homeowners can work on their own houses if they're off for a holiday and they have the time to do it.
Well, this has to do, this is all through the building code as it pertains to the permitting process, correct? This is, so this is a specific, this is very specific. I think the way this is even provided through the amendment is through a specific permitting process. So if you're doing work at home, like, you're repairing your deck or something, that doesn't fall into this category anyway.
Well, you would need a, you would need a permit for that, depending on what you're doing. Some homeowners don't feel that they need a permit, but...
Well, what I mean is like a repair, like, you know, you're, you're, you know, you're putting in a new slab of wood or something, just to replace a rotting piece, right? Is that, do you need a permit for that?
Well, again, you know, why is it rotting? And, you know, little slab of wood, well, is it a main carrier? Is it a girder? Well, you know what happens? A lot of people want to replace the decking. They start taking up the decking, and all of a sudden, they're like, hmm. So the decking leads to the framing of the actual structure that holds the decking on, and it morphs, and, you know, now they're in it, so now they're, they got a project on their hands. But, you know, a small project, you know, common sense thing, you know, you know, putting a piece of trim around a window, or, you know, siding, and you don't need a permit for the rest of the replacement of windows.
Right.
So you could, you know, something like that. So there is a balance, you know, what somebody can do without a permit.
Right. I think this is a good first step in the direction that we want to take. I know that there, you know, obviously, there's always room for making this, improving this, or making it more restrictive, or not making it restrictive. I mean, I think, based on the feedback that we've been getting from the public and the willingness from the Building Department, which, by the way, I really appreciate your collaboration on this, it's been, yeah, it's been great to work with you, Sean. I think this is a great step in the right direction. I'd be in favor of setting this up for a public hearing.
Should I add the language that was raised?
Emergency language?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah. Well, why don't we just talk for a few minutes about whether we want to say, "No Sundays and holidays during July and August."
No work whatsoever?
On Sundays and holidays. You know, I know we talked about it, and we're a little, we were a little worried about it because of the homeowners, but if the homeowners are allowed to do the work...
That's fine.
You know, the neighbors are just like, "This is the summer, this is when we're trying to enjoy the peace and quiet, and we don't want a house being constructed, and can't you just take one day a week off?"
If it's the homeowner, and he's not having any employees, just himself and his family...
He could do it, yeah.
It's fine, I'm fine with that.
I don't know, I mean, that's just a thought, or, you know, reducing the hours to nine to six.
I gotta be honest with you, having been a contractor, dealing with the public, trying to make a living, saying, "No, you can't work on Sunday," when...
It's just going to get somebody else that will, that's all.
Yeah, you know, it's, you know, we're looking at, and rightfully so, you're looking at it from the homeowners, but I'm looking at, having my own business...
Six days a week's not enough?
Seven days, when you have your own business, you're working seven days a week, 24 hours a day. There is no break. This is where we have to, can't lose sight.
And if you have the three days of rain in a week, and you have to get something done, you have to work.
Or something happens during the week, and now you're pushed into the weekend, you have a deadline, and, you know, most contractors get paid on completing things. So it's, I think, eliminating one full day, I think it's an overreach, to be honest with you.
Even though it's just for the two months in the summer, July and August.
It's just for a few months, but, you know, that's the busiest time of year.
I mean, instead of getting rid of a day, I would, I would take the hour restrictions on Sundays and make them year-round.
We could do that, too.
Because, you know, those of us who live here year-round deserve to have some of our Sundays, too.
So what do you...
But you've got nine to seven, I mean, why don't you have nine to five on a Sunday? Come on, it's Sunday.
Okay, so we could, you know, I'm fine with nine to five.
Nine to five on a Sunday, I'm fine with that, but year-round.
Year-round.
Yeah.
Not just in the summer.
Because, I mean, the optics of it, if you're doing this for June, July, and August, you're saying you're doing this for a specific grouping of people, and, you know, the wintertime, it's dark after 5:00 anyway.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm fine with that, I just want to make sure the Building Department's going to be okay with it.
So that's all year-round, nine to five on Sundays.
Yep.
Correct.
Correct.
And this is on construction projects? This isn't, this isn't somebody fixing their house, or...
renovations, additions.
Correct. I mean, I think when we originally took this up, we were talking about limiting all work.
It just, the aim was, like, major construction projects, but the wording of the legislation may have needed some tweaks.
And I mean, and that's why I think, I think if we can, if we can word this where it's permits for new construction, you're talking about projects that are of lengthy duration, not somebody adding on a deck or somebody putting in a pool. It's a lengthy project where the neighbors really need a break from the noise and the...
Right, building of a new home, renovate, major renovations.
Well, I guess, it depends on what's the definition of construction. We should have that. Are we talking about exterior only?
No, I believe it implies additions, renovations. It's really the size and scope of the project, as opposed to what you're calling it. It's construction.
But if you're putting a new roof on, that's not new construction, but it should be limited.
Maybe.
Well, when you say new roof, again, you're not required to have a building permit if you're reshingling your roof. The minute you touch the plywood underneath, now you're into the structure.
That's right.
And then you have to meet high wind strapping, with the ridge strapping, everything. Now you're required to have a permit. You know, and again, traditionally, what happens is, you have somebody that's going to repair their roof, to reshingle it, they start to pull up the shingles, and guess what they find underneath? You have rotten plywood.
Yeah, but if you say just new construction or additions, that's not going to capture, or may not capture, someone who's putting new siding on their entire house, and that's going to be a noisy proposition. So why would we just say new construction? I mean, I guess it all depends on what's the definition.
The definition of construction, I mean, I quickly looked at it on my phone, which I can't really delve into too much, but it includes all of those things, as opposed to what I thought you were trying to distinguish, which was like home improvement projects, which are more done by the homeowner. That's, that's kind of the distinction, but, you know, Sean makes these judgment calls on a daily basis, several times a day, depending on each of the circumstances of the projects, because like you said, one starts out like tiny, a home improvement project, and then it turns into a whole day, completely blown.
And I mean, let's be honest, this is not going to come to you until it's a homeowner that's been dealing with this for several days, and then they go, "You know what? They can't do this on Sundays, let me make a phone call," and then they're asking you to come the following Sunday to shut, you know what I mean? So it's not like a homeowner doing something small is going to get captured anyway, because it's probably a one-day deal, but...
People are fairly, I mean, I've found people are fairly patient. I know my driveway has been blocked one day, I'm not going to call anybody. If it happens every day, then it's like, you get like, okay.
So let me ask, just as a point of clarification, so we're going to take out the Sunday restrictions? It's just going to be a year-round restriction on Sundays?
We're going to leave Sunday restrictions, but take it out...
June, July, and August.
June, July, and August. It's going to be a year-round Sunday restriction from 9:00 to 5:00.
We're going to keep the federal holiday restriction?
If that's what you would like, that, yes, and I'm going to add the language on the emergency exemption for an emergency situation.
Got it, got it.
You know, and it's, you know, in the federal holidays, you know, I mean, you bring up a good point with Juneteenth. I mean, I personally, when I first started working for the town, I thought I was back in school, having days off, you know, on holidays and stuff like that, having, having your own business. You know, I work on Christmas...
Listen, everybody, everybody, the reason why it was a problem in the village is because everybody went to work on a Thursday and didn't even realize that they were working on a federal holiday, they were just working. They didn't intentionally go to work on a federal holiday, they just were working.
Another Columbus Day...
I mean, think about it, the stores are open, the delis are, like, every, it's, it's, like, as government agencies, we shut down because we recognize those holidays, but for everybody else, if you work in retail, you work in the food industry, you're working. So you're telling, you're basically telling one industry, "You can't work that day."
So nine to five on Sundays, all year-round, is that where we landed?
I think that's fair.
Nine to five, all year-round, and no federal holidays, okay, and...
No federal, oh, no.
Oh.
That was originally, yeah. No work shall occur on federal.
Right, no, I thought it was...
Peremption for emergencies, and then, if you just give us the definition.
Yeah, I will send that to you when I circulate the final draft to start.
Now, the emergencies, is that specific to, like, just like state of emergencies? Or can we actually talk about if, God forbid, somebody needs an emergency repair? Is that, is that what we're talking about?
That's what we're talking about.
Okay.
So, I mean, so basically...
You have a tree fall in your house.
Right.
If something like that happens, number one, I usually get the call...
Right.
From fire marshals, or if code enforcement responded, I'll get a call, whether it's Saturday, Sunday, at night...
Right.
Car into a building.
Yeah.
So we have the Building Department, we have emergency building permits that we issue, so that they can start forthwith, any repairs that they need to do, to make the property safe. And then, then it's for me to follow up with them, to make sure that they come in and get the permits. We're not going to have somebody go through the permit process, the lengthy permit, not lengthy, but whatever they need to do, they need to make it safe, and they need to stabilize it, so that the people living there...
Understandable, yeah.
Or have a store, you know, and a business, business needs to open.
Yeah.
And they just have a car go through their front window.
So if they have to do it on a federal holiday, they, you know, you will give them that permission, right?
Necessary emergency repairs, or some language like that.
And you just did that for the house down the road from me that had the car go into it.
Yeah.
So I think this is a really good first step, and I really appreciate, Sean, your...
I appreciate your work in this.
Collaboration, Christine, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
You, too.
I'll recirculate.
Oh, and Sean, we got some good, positive feedback on some, three of your employees.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's so nice to get that, for them and for all of us, yeah.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's a tough business, and, you know, I don't ask you many to, when you work with the public, but we get paid to help people.
Yep.
And that's what we're supposed to be doing, and they're doing it well.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Well, I mean, if we're a little bit ahead of schedule, so we could always do our reports, I don't know, let me just check with Janice and make sure the chief's not here already. Oh, is he here? Yeah.
We can do the updates, if I can find them.
Yeah, let's do our updates. Rick, did you want to get us started?
Sure. Last Friday, we had a veteran ceremony at Hampton Bay's Elementary School. You know, they raise a flag in honor of a local veteran every month, but it's especially important on Veterans Day. So this year, they took down Pat Gunn's flag, and they put up one for Don Veek, who's a local volunteer. It was great to see him. I know he's been very involved with the Methodist Church and with the Legion itself, so it was great to see, I know everybody was there. It's always great to see the kids. I always used to like to bring in one of the little essays that the kids, you know, wrote, but they were so beyond us, like, I wanted to invite him here to read our resolutions, you know, they would, what a great group of fourth-grade kids, it was, it was just awesome. So we got to follow that up. So, uh, we got to follow that up. I know we were all on Tuesday at the American Legion for their ceremony. Uh, that's one that's very well attended all year. Uh, you know, this year, Dave Agastribe was the keynote speaker, had a probably one of the best speeches I've ever heard to really recognize our local veterans.
Very inspiring speech.
He did a wonderful job there, and it was, it's a great group of guys there. Anytime you could support, you know, the Hampton Bays Legion, it's something, you know, we should all do. Tomorrow night is, I've been talking about it for a couple of weeks, is Open Mic at Nice Place Coffee in Remsenberg, from six to eight, and it's for grades five through twelve. So it's a wide variety of entertainment, and, uh, the kids are so talented, it's a wonderful thing to, uh, to attend. And last but not least, on Sunday in Hampton Bays, all the local organizations, the Rotary Club, the Kiwanis, the Lions, are all getting together and doing a food drive. You can drop off food at both King Cullen and Stop &amp; Shop, and, uh, you know, it's in, uh... It's a demand that's picked up in the last few weeks, and they wanna make sure that our food pantries have enough food, including the one at Hampton Bay Schools. So if you have a chance, drop off a little something, or there's actually a QR code, so if you wanna make a, a cash donation, you can do that also.
Thank you. You wanna take a break from the updates and... Hello, Chief, thank you for joining us. You're here to talk to us about a few things, Handle With Care update, and then some grant opportunities.
I can't, it's, what, Movember?
Yes, yes, I...
So I'll have to see what the bus says.
I always can't wait till the end of November.
My brother-in-law walked into something and I went...
November is Men's Health Month, and the police officers grow mustaches to...
Oh, is that right?
To support each other, and so I get roped into that as well.
You have to lead by example.
But I look forward to the end of November. Yeah, um, so let me give you an update on Handle With Care. That, that's a program that you, um, that you approved us to pilot it back in, um, April, and we did that for the end of the school year, um, and it worked really well. From, you know, April to through June, there were ten, ten notifications from the police officers to the school district. And then, again, from September to now, there's been another nine, um, notifications to the schools, so it's working, it's working well. This is, it's, it's, you know, something that we did informally before. Anytime, you know, just to, to give, uh, you know, briefly, uh, what it's, it's about. Whenever a kid, a kid in our town, a school-aged kid, has some kind of traumatic incident that we're witness to, we would, we would unofficially call the school, a teacher that we knew, a superintendent that we knew, just to let them know, you know, this was happening. This is just more of an official way to, to handle it, and so less people fall through the cracks. And, um, and we're looking out for the kids that, uh, that need the, the extra attention during the school day. So it's been going very well. That, that pilot was just Hampton Bays, and now the, um, now, uh, we've offered it since then to the other school districts. So slowly, they're, they're, you know, everybody's busy, so they're coming around. We have, um, the town attorney's office drew up two more agreements. Remsenberg with Denise Sullivan, and Bridge Hampton with Mary Kelly. And those are in their hands at the moment, to be signed, and then we'll get them back. But, um, it's go- it's going well. It's, it's going well. Of those, I think of those, uh, nineteen, nineteen, um...
Notifications?
Yeah, notifications, um, seven of them, no, three, three of them, only three of them, our, our SRO needed to get involved in and do extra. You know, our SRO monitors all of the notifications, so he, he sees them as soon as they go out, and if it's, if it's really serious, then he gets involved and makes sure that there's follow-up to it. Um, and there was only three that, uh, that that happened. We really don't know from the other side what they do, other than they do anything from just paying attention to, to that kid for the day, all the way to, uh, linking them to services that they may need. So, um, but that's, that's on their end. So it's, it's going well, and we opened it to all the school districts, so, um... At Tuckahoe has a change right now. The other superintendent that left, he wanted to get it rolling, so I'll, I'll meet with the new superintendent shortly. She, she has been around, so I, I think that she'll probably be looking to do it also. So that's what's going on with that.
That's great. I mean, it's so important to, they can have eyes on the child the next day to make sure they, you know, just to be aware that the, that the kid went through a trauma.
It's worth pointing out, though, that we are one of the only police departments that do this, right, in, in the state of New York.
Like many things that we do here, you know, we, we lead, we, we definitely lead, and like, like most things that we lead with, certainly that are successful like this, a lot of others jump on. And that's the goal. It, it's the goal, you know? Since, since this, since this inception, the sheriffs had taken this on, you know, and, and, um... And I believe that they should, because they are involved in civil evictions, and, and what can be more traumatic than, than losing your home or being kicked out of your home. So, so for that, for that reason, I, I'm thrilled. You know, I, I see the sheriff on TV, you know, um, talking about this program, and it, you know, it's, it's, it makes me proud that it started here.
Yeah, actually, I wanna commend you. I understand that this has received county-wide attention. You had, uh, legislator Sanon, as well as, you know, county executive Romaine, they're looking at this. They're, they're very happy with this program.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's caught on. Even, even Letitia James wants to make this statewide, handy.
I went to a conference in Tennessee with Kim Laubie and HUGS, and they had, I went to one of the, one of the, um, trainings that I went to was Tennessee, basically, this is a state program.
Yes.
And the state runs it, and they, I mean, they showed all the counties that were involved in Tennessee, and they have, they have expanded it to where it, where the Handle With Care program is partnered with their state agencies that do the follow-up, and then they have, these kids can go to camps. I mean, it's this whole amazing, you know, program. And when I went up there and I said, I said, I'm amazed at how big you've expanded. I'm like, we just started this in our district in New York, and they were amazed that a state like New York hadn't fully embraced this and done it as a state thing, so...
It's also, it's also helped us to gain traction with our relationship with the schools and do more things. And, and what, uh, just the communication alone, and, and gaining the confidence of the educators, you know, it's not always, um... It hasn't always been a, um, you know, a, a tight relationship between education and police, you know? And, and now they're, they're trusting that we're not there to, to lock up kids, we're not there for criminal investigations. We're there to, to...
Support, support the community.
To serve that community like they are. So that's brought us to a place where all of our superintendents, all eight of them wrote letters, supporting a grant application that we just did. Uh, you know, Sergeant Josiah Hashla, he's doing our grants now. He's a truly amazing officer, uh, and they all supported this grant application. What this is, this is, you know, I'm, I'm pretty optimistic. This is eight hundred thousand dollars over three years. And, um, I just asked him this morning, how, when, can I tell them we're gonna get an answer soon? And he said, two months, so we'll, we'll still cross our fingers for that. But, um, this is for behavioral threat assessment in the schools, and this money will, will be used for a number of different things. One is the mental health connection. So it will be paying the hourly wage of the clinical social workers who will be doing the behavioral threat assessment for us. It will be paying for the, when we pull police officers off the road and put them in schools, because right now we have, thank you, we do have two school resource officers now, full-time. But we also pull police officers off the road to teach dare, and we eat that, um, when they're not on the road. So this grant will pay for that backfill, so we could do more of it, we could pull more off, um, train more in dare, and, um, this grant pays for that backfill, as well as a number of other things that it's gonna pay for. A crime analyst, um, that will be combing through social media and helping with the behavioral threat assessments. We pay, pay for that as well. But that's, that's still, uh, you know, we're, we're gonna be talking more about that, because that's really just crossing my fingers to see if we, we do get that funding. Um, it, it's been supported by a lot of people, so I'm, I'm hopeful for it, and, uh... When the government opens, maybe they'll read the application and see, and make a decision.
Let's hope we get it.
Hope we get it, yeah.
Well, that's all so amazing. I mean, I'm, I'm really glad that you had such a good experience in Hampton Bays, and you couldn't have a better partner than Lars Clemenson. And now the other schools are interested, or at least two of them now. Uh, but even if all eight sign up, um, it's not gonna, it's not, it's not a burden on the police department, right?
It's, it's, that actually makes things easier. It's no cost to us. The Hampton Bay School District, um, developed the, the QR code themselves. So the technology they develop, it's in our cars, everything was in our car already. We already had a smartphone in the car. So now it's just a QR code that they developed. It's, it's streamlined. Um, the, the officer just, just downloads, he takes a picture, uh... Scans the QR code, and picks the school district, and the school, the school now has the notification.
So then the, the, the program, the program and procedure that was in place in Hampton Bays is being replicated for the other school districts?
Yes, it was set up already. Now it's just a matter of, now they're getting the notification.
Got it.
It was, it was...
It's great.
Already set up that way.
And the concerns that some people had about the students' privacy, that, that nothing has come of that, right? It's not an issue.
The, the school doesn't even get the name of the, of the student. They just get the address where something occurred, where a, a school-aged child was exposed to some kind of trauma. They do, on their end, they look up, all right, what kids do we have that live at that address? They don't know, they don't know...
What happened.
What happened. They don't know the people involved. They don't know if somebody was arrested or what. They don't know any of that. They just know, let's pay attention to this kid and see, and see if they need help.
And there's no information back the other way to the PD, so there's no concern for privacy issues?
What's the status on the, the linking in with the, the clinical social workers? Like, how, how is that process?
Handle With Care-wise, we don't get involved.
The school does.
They do.
But the school, right, the school does that. Whether they feel as though their own, their own people can handle, uh, what the child needs, or whether they need to go outside, or, or, or talk to the parents to go outside, that's all on their end, and they don't report back to us.
Okay.
Behavioral threat assessment, when we get to that level...
Yeah.
That will be a team of SROs, clinical social workers, and educators.
And that's dependent on the funding?
That's dependent on the funding.
But, but that's what you imagine you will create?
When I say dependent on the funding, to get it to where we want it to be.
Right.
We're doing it now.
Okay.
You know, we're, we're paying attention to, to students that are on a, a track, maybe to, um, to violence, and trying to steer them away from that. But it's, it's very, uh, more or less, everybody's doing it in silos. Education's doing it on their own, we're doing it on our own.
But I wanna commend you, though, for the, the, the idea of linking both those, you know, the policing field with the social working field, to understand that there's ways of going about dealing with folks who are having a hard time, and I think that, um, it's just, it's, it's, it seems groundbreaking, you know, in terms, because the nation's talking about it, and we're, we're like on the path to doing it.
Yeah, the nation's talking about it. This governor ma- made mandates, actually, to all the counties in New York. You will have behavioral threat assessment. And, and they do...
How much funding did they give you?
Well, that's the thing, they get mandates, we didn't get the mandate.
I'm funded.
The, uh, the counties' governments got the mandates.
Right.
Um, and, you know, like, like a lot of mandates, doesn't come with, well, how would you like us to do it? Give us the rulebook and give us the funding to get it done. Uh, so, so they do check boxes.
I'm just actually, I'm actually happy that they don't give you the rulebook on how they want it done, because we know our communities best and what works here, and like, I'm glad that we can set it up the way that it works.
We have, we have partners with the US Secret Service. We actually just did a, with, in combination with the Hampton Bay School District, we put on a training that, um, where the US Secret Service came in. These are the experts in behavioral threat assessment, and they came in and introduced behavioral threat assessment to superintendents from, all the way from Glencov to Montauk came to, to this. There was, uh, I think, two hundred, a hundred and fifty people there. And, uh, I spoke and introduced what we were doing here in the town, what we were hopeful to continue, and they spoke about the introduction of behavioral threat assessment. They're also committed, uh, they're the National Threat Assessment, um, Center, and they are committed to training us throughout this whole thing. Training the educators, training us, training the mental health people that are involved. Family Service League sent social workers that they, they anticipate will be part of the program if we get the granting. It's rolling, it's just, you know...
And the trust and the communication that's improving is so, so wonderful to hear, because that's what's been lacking in the past, that school is concerned, right? And now, the more they deal with you, the more they trust, and they'll welcome, welcome us in.
So, it's all flowing in the right direction.
Yeah. What about this, a couple other grants, right, that, uh...
Yeah, well, there's, there's several grants, there's several grant applications that we have going on at the same time, but that's, that's the main one.
Mm-hmm.
There's always, there's always, like, as they come up, we put in for them.
We just did one, we did two.
There were two last night.
Body worn camera one, and...
Oh, yeah, that's tip, that, as we increase the size of the department, naturally, we need more cameras, so we, we put in for grants to get those, to get that equipment.
And what was the other one for?
It was something about, um...
It was a juvenile, yeah, yeah, the juvenile, um...
Services, some, some service.
That maybe helped with our youth, youth court.
I mean, it's good that we're doing all these.
Yeah, it's great that you, uh, you're aware of all these grant opportunities and jumping in.
Yeah, like I said, Sergeant Hashla is, is on the ball.
Great.
Given my regards.
That's wonderful. Well, you know, let us know if there's anything we can do to help. We wanna support you, and, uh... You know, we're very proud of you and the department and all you're accomplishing, so don't hesitate to ask if you need anything.
Keep you posted. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good?
Yep.
Thank you for coming in. Still pretty ahead now. Were you finished, Rick?
I'm done, I'm done.
All right, thank you.
I'll be quick.
Bill?
Um, you can say. We've been waiting for this day for West Hampton Senior Community Center, and it's gonna be December second at one o'clock. Bring your boots, bring your shovel, we have a digging party.
Yeah, we had the kickoff meeting with all the contractors, and they were so professional, and I have a really good feeling about this project.
They promised me, uh, by next fall, we'd be having a party there for the community.
Yeah, so the, we'll send out, they'll send out more details, but it'll be December second at one o'clock. That's what it seems to be now, and, uh... We'll do the groundbreaking.
Yeah. Then last night with Michael, I'll let him fill us, fill your win in on about going into Noriah Civic with Charlie and Mark and Nick. Tomorrow, I go into Tuckahoe School for Careers Day at eight o'clock. I did it last year. It's fun with the... I don't know what, what grade I'm gonna have tomorrow, but it was...
Oh, that's so cute.
Yeah. I can't bring the dog, but, because he's part of the job.
That's too bad. They would love to see honey.
And what else is going on? I think that's about it.
All right. And, uh, other than the, you know, the other things that you both mentioned, it was a, um, last Saturday, the Kiwanis Rotary and Knights of Columbus had a big fundraiser for the local food pantries over at the Immaculate Conception in West Hampton, and that was very well-attended. So it's nice to see. Good coordination, good food. I thank them for doing that. Michael?
Yeah, so, um, this past week, we had a, the Sustainability Committee meeting. Councilman Pell and I had, um, Ryan Murphy to attend to discuss some of the, uh, what, what he came to our work session to discuss about complaints, numbers of complaints, and so on and so forth. The Sustainability Committee is obviously very interested in the leaf blower law. Um, one of the things that we did, of course, was, um, instead of necessarily changing the law, making it more restricted, um, let's, let's find ways we can actually inform people of the law as is, because what we found was that there was just people who don't even know that the law is on the books. So we, we did a lot of outreach through Ryan's Office CRC, um, and Ryan came to the Sustainability Committee and just talked a lot about how outreach has impacted, um, complaints, and we've seen a, a reduction in complaints on, on the leaf blower issue. So we're seeing that the, the outreach is working. We, this year, we're gonna be talking about, this upcoming year, we're gonna be talking about how we improve that outreach and make it even more, um, you know, uh, uh, you know, uh, active to, to, to really promote the, the, the idea of, of, of following the code and, and improve compliance.
following the code and, and improve compliance. Um, I did attend the Noiac Civic. Councilman Pell was there, um, and Charlie gave a great presentation with Nick Jimenez, um, on the pedestrian safety improvement project, um, and talked about the town's considerations with respect to the TAP grant versus the, uh, the pursuit of doing the project in-house. Um, uh, Charlie and Nick fielded a lot of questions from the community, and I will say that he did an amazing job. Both of them did an amazing job, um, really going through what, you know, the project is gonna look like in terms of the scope, the timeline, the cost. And it seems like people are very, very happy. And I will say that the Noiac community, especially the Civic, is, is very pleased with how responsive town government has been over the last couple of years. They, they love what Charlie's been doing. They love that Noiac Road's been repaved. There's so many great things that they're very happy about, and, uh, they're also happy with the town board, and they all expressed their thanks to all of you, so.
And then in, in the spring, we'll be able to do the second half of Noiac Road. That, the money's in the budget.
Yes, and there were questions about whether that was gonna be the, the, is there a phase three, or is it, the rest of it is in the budget?
I think it's two phases. We reduced it to the two phases.
That's what I thought, yeah, so. There were some questions about that, but that's good.
Yeah. Charlie didn't...
Sorry?
Know that, about the, because I hope there's not a misunderstanding.
It was brought up as a question, and Charlie said it, it depends on what's in the budget, so I...
Yeah.
I just, I think that that was just a question. But it, you know, again, didn't matter. I mean, people are very happy with...
Yeah. I mean, the request was for 1.3 million to finish Noiac Road, so I was under the impression that it was the rest of the road.
Yeah.
Hopefully, that's the case.
Okay.
Thank you. Well, that's good. That sounds like a positive meeting last night.
It was a very positive meeting. It was very good.
And I did ask Jim Burke to get a resolution to us for the, authorizing me to sign the decline of the TAP grant.
Yes, I also said that we haven't made an official decision. I know that that's what we're, we're talking about. We're going in that direction, but I also wanted to wait to see until an official decision has been made.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, Cindy?
So I just have, um, in addition to on Friday, the Hampton Bays Veteran Ceremony, and the Veteran Ceremony at the Legion on Tuesday. On Monday morning, I did attend a ribbon cutting for East Quogue Schools Hallway of Heroes. Um, it's something that they have done. It's actually a really great project. It's actually turned out really beautiful, where it's their whole entrance hallway on the side of the building, where all the kids come in out of the car loop, um, is now dedicated to veterans and first responders. Um, I was there with Councilwoman Skivoni, um, to do the ribbon, oh, sorry.
[laughing]
Councilwoman Skivoni, um, to do the ribbon cutting. And then, it is actually like a whole, they had us at eight o'clock in the morning, and then they had breakfast for the veterans, which was really nice. And then at nine thirty, they had a school-wide assembly, which, uh, County Executive Ed Romaine and Congresswoman Lalota also attended to honor our veterans. Um, it was just, it was a really nice ceremony, great, actually nice two ceremonies. It was a great day, and, you know, I wanna thank them for recognizing our, our veterans.
Very nice. Yeah, people come out from every...
I think, Bill, you went to Tuckahoe, right?
Yes. I just remembered that, when you said that. I went to Tuckahoe and with the kids. I actually brought my granddaughter.
It's on the picture.
And she, um, she marched right with the other kids. It's a very, the kids did a wonderful job.
She's very independent.
Yeah. It was a nice ceremony for the vets.
Well, good.
Bit windy, but it was nice.
Mm. Does anybody have any other thing else they wanna mention? All right, then, I move to go into executive session for some confidential legal advice and a litigation update, and then close. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.